We want to thank our agencies for coming out and making the requests. How long is it? Like to call the meeting of the Franklin City Council to order. And thank you, we've just finished with budget requests. We are now in budget season. So, thank you for your patience and we'll get started immediately. Please remember to turn your cell phones off or place them in vibrate mode. And we will have invocation, Board Four. Mrs. Murphy?
Thank you. Please follow your heads. Lord, inspire us today with the qualities of good counsel. Give us insight to make wise decisions. Integrity to face the truth. Courage to make difficult choices. And Lord, thank you for allowing us to have compassion for the needs of others. Make us a model of justice and honor for the world. And let us now forget that our job is to, to serve both you and others. May we receive into our arms the light of your revelation. Amen.
Amen. And now would you please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have some special guests with us and we're excited to have them. And they decided to sit on the back row. Ms. Burgess and your team, would you, I want to ask everyone, please welcome the Franklin High School Robotics Team. We are proud of all of our youth and we want to show this expression each time we have an achievement by our youth.
Good evening Mayor Johnson Ashburn, Vice Mayor Cheatham, Mr. Martin, Mr. Williams and City Council. We are certainly honored to be here. My name is Liz Burgess and I am the coach for Franklin Robotics Team. We have had a team since 2005. And it has been an honor to be invited by City Council to come see you all. And we are certainly appreciate the invitation. We also sincerely appreciate your support and your words of encouragement as I get through my other half from you all. As we continue to compete, I would hear from him and, and get messages on your support and your interest and your enthusiasm for our program. And for that, we are extremely grateful to have a city behind us to support us. And it is my privilege at this point. And before I start, I do also want to say not only thank you to the city, but I have parents sitting behind me. And though they're not all here, you know, we work really hard and these parents have been very gracious at letting me bring them home sometimes at 10:30, 11:00 at night. And so, I really appreciate that. I also have the high school principal Travis Phelps, the middle school principal Lisa Francis, and my superintendent Dr. Michelle Bell, of whom we also are greatly appreciative of their support, that they continue to give this program. It is a wonderful program. It provides great opportunities for kids and it wouldn't happen without everybody in this town. So, with that said, I would like to introduce our team of those who are here. Some of them are at soccer practice, some of them have other obligations and weren't able to be here. I'd like to start with my mentor over here. This is Hank Mummert. Hank's son was on my very first robotics team in 2005 and Hank meandered in. He has yet to find the door to leave and I'm keeping it locked. Every time he gets close to it, we move something in front of it. So, he has been with me since 2005. The gentleman who is working the laptop is, oh, and Hank works for BAE Systems, who has also been a great supporter for us. Kyle, who is kneeling behind me trying to get my technology, is the technology person at Chouan University. And he was on, on the Southampton Robotics Team. And when that team folded for a variety of reasons, he went off to college and has been a mentor for our team ever since. So, we are extremely appreciative of him. I have one other mentor, Don Shanks. He is with High Ground Services here in town. And he is our programmer and excellent mentor. So, I have three adult mentors and we compete against other teams that have multitude of mentors, many of whom have three, four, five, and six engineers of which I do not have. And so, we, we do have a bit of a difference in the competition level with which we enter. But with that said, I also want to introduce you to my team. This is Alex Russell. He's a sixth grader. This is his very first year with us and he made it to championship on his first year. So, that was a great effort for him. I also want to introduce you to what, I'm going to hold off on, on this gentleman a minute. This is Cindy Mitrovic. She's a seventh grader. This is her second year. And she's become a strong mechanical component of our program. Next to her is Oakley Stoll. And Oakley is huge on our scouting and our scoring. And this year, she's also jumped into the actual building and designing of our robot. We have Sarah Connor, who is a seventh grader also. This is her second year. She is instrumental again with the scoring component, very good with my financial end of things. She helps with bookkeeping and does a lot of odd jobs. She's our safety captain. I have three seniors, one of who is at the soccer match right now. And we call them the Three Stooges. This would be Grant Scarborough, Clinton Smith, and Daryl West, who is not here with us. They have been with me since they were ninth graders. And they have come every single day, of which we build a tremendous number of days. And they have supported this program 100 percent. And because of them, we opted to go to two regional tournaments this year, which allowed us the opportunity to actually do so well in Richmond that we were able to come, to win championships. These two are our drivers. Clinton drives, Grant shoots, Daryl is our human player, and Cindy is our coach. So, with that kind of general outline, and I know we're pressed for time, but I do want to let the kids speak for just a minute. And we'll start with Cindy, who's going to give you a brief overview of the FIRST program.
Hi.
Hello.
Our robotics team is part of an organization called FIRST. FIRST stands for For Inspiration and Recognition of Science and Technology. And it does just that. It inspires, well, it was made to inspire high school students to engage in engineering and technology. It promotes STEM and Dean Kamen founded it for those very reasons. He figured, he wanted to make basically a sport for high school students that promoted engineering and technology because he saw a shortage in those things in today's youth. So, he figured, let's make a sport. Like, why can't it be fun like soccer or football or tennis? So, that's why each year, we have a different challenge. This year was called Ultimate Ascent. We had to design a robot that climbed a three-tier pyramid and shot frisbees. Every year, we have a different challenge. And we have six weeks in which we can build it, which is called the Build Season. And I will pass you on to Oakley to explain that.
The Build Season happens every year. Oh, I don't want to move it. I'm scared to touch it. It happens the first Saturday of every January and for every year. This year, it was Ultimate Ascent. We had to play, pretty much Ultimate Frisbee and climb a pyramid. This year, we only went with the first level and just, we didn't want to fall. And we have an amazing shooter. We took, it takes six weeks for us to build it. And we struggled this year. We took a long time prototyping, long time designing, but we ended up having an amazing robot. And at the end of the six weeks, we had to bag and tag the robot and we cannot touch it until our regional. Right now, it is, I think, at St. Louis. So, hopefully, we can open it when we get there and everything will be fine.
We do have a video we want to show you, just to kind of give you a feel on what our program is about. It's really interesting to stand up here and, and talk about it. But to actually see it, one of the things that we did, can you get it up Kyle? One of the things that we did this year, which was kind of unique, was we added a camera to our robot. And so, we have video from the robot itself, from the camera, as if you are sitting on our robot, riding around throughout the competition. The competition is three days, two and a half actually. And what we do is we, for a day and a half, we compete with three other robots, an alliance. It's three robots against three robots. And it's a random selection. So, this time, you're going to get a set of robots that you compete with. And then, the next time you play, you'll have different robots. You might have competed with them the last time you played. We play about 11 times in, in a day and a half. And at the end of that, on Saturday afternoon, they choose teams, they choose, the top eight teams get to pick teams with whom they will have as partners. And then, we go through the qualification matches, the championship elimination rounds. We do have a Facebook page and we do have, that you can see a lot of our information on. I'm sorry, this is taking so long. While we're doing that, I'm going to also tell you about a fundraiser that we have that tries to help our program get started. So, while we're working on that, I'm going to have Grant talk to you about that.
The robots we build don't come cheap. So, we spent a lot of the offseason conducting fundraisers and community involvement activities where, and one of these activities we do is the Robo Regato, which we host sometime close towards the summer. It's coming up pretty soon. I'm not sure, the 18th of May? And what this is, we ask organizations or, you know, groups in the community to form a team of maybe two to four people. And they pay to build a boat made out of cardboard, duct tape, glue, caulk, and, and more duct tape. And then, they put them all together and try to race each other down the Blackwater River with just paddles and their own strength. And, and we also ask local businesses, they can sponsor a boat. And it's a really good community involvement activity that we do every year, well, for the past two years.
Does anyone have any questions before we show you the video?
Ms. Burgess, will we be able to review the competition?
Yes. And may I say, if you may, I interrupt you also. Ms. Murphy's son was on our team. He has now since gone to college and is graduating in December. And so, he has been a part of our team. So, we are well-rounded and well-supported. So, we appreciate that too. So, she has some familiarity with the program as well. She did go with us to Richmond to watch the competition. So, she's also well versed. If you have any sideline questions, feel free to ask Ms. Murphy because she's an expert on this as well. It's been a great program.
Well, I think to give you time to get the video straight, we have some housekeeping. So, if you would like to have a seat on the front and then we can...
Oh, okay.
So, it's not going to run it all?
No, we won't be able to show it to you.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, these are some pictures. This is what our robot looks like. It's small this year. That's us hanging on the pyramid. One of the things, the goal was to shoot frisbees into a goal 10 feet high. And the last thing is to climb this pyramid. Our goal was, we ended up not being able to climb the pyramid other than to hang on the first level, which gave us 10 points. But because we were able to hang and we have such a good shooter, we have different colored bumpers depending upon which side of the field we're playing on. But you can see the different styles of different robots. Everybody builds their own robot. There's no set robot pattern you build. You build however you want to build it. You're just told, this is the game. You build a robot to play the game. So, you see a wide variety of them. There were actually some robots that climbed that pyramid. Those were our alliance teams. We were called the Hard Hat Alliances. That's the group of three robot teams that actually won. But you can see we're hanging. They have to be off the ground. Even a paper, sheet of paper up above is enough. So, you'll see some judges would go take a sheet of pa, that was our final score, 93 to 140, and we won. So, it was a very exciting tournament. We were very thrilled. We won one other time in 2006 where we beat everybody. There were 65 teams there from up and down the East Coast. And we were able to compete, competitive, very competitively against them. There was actually a team from New Jersey. They have 45 players there and they have to pay $575 per student to be on their team. And they had five engineers. So, we even beat them. So, it was very exciting. We were very thrilled. To come from a small town with minimal resources, the caliber of what these kids bring to this game is just absolutely incredible. And I'm sorry you're unable to see it. We can certainly send you our Facebook link and you can check it out at some point in time.
Well, we want to see Bot. We want to meet Bot.
Yeah, we'd like, well, maybe we'll bring him back because we've done demonstrations in the hallway before. So, if you would like to have us back, we would be thrilled to come show you our robot.
We want to meet Bot.
We would be thrilled.
After they win the world championship.
That's right. Thank you. So, thank you very much.
If somebody wanted to make a donation to you guys, how would be the best way to do it?
Wow, that would be really nice. We, you can write a check to Franklin High School Robotics and give it either to myself. You can pass it on to Mr. Burgess or myself, or, or to the Franklin High School. You can have it sent there. And we have, that's where our account is set up. So, that would, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Again, thank you very much for your continued support. We hope to keep this program up and running for years. I'm very grateful that we have the Charles Street Gym. Can't thank you enough and the school enough for allowing us the opportunity. We have been homeless for many years and this has just been stellar to have one location. So, thank you.
We do have our housekeeping to do. I'm going to ask you just to have a seat on the front row and we'll get back with you. Thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor, you, we have a resolution.
Franklin City Council Resolution Honoring the Franklin High School 2013 First Robotics Team 1610. Whereas Mr. Dean Kamen desired to help young people discover the excitement and rewards of science and technology when in 1989, he founded FIRST for inspiration and recognition of science and technology to inspire young people's interest in participation in science and technology. And whereas FIRST is a non, not for profit, excuse me, public charity whose mission is to inspire young people to be science and technology leaders by engaging them in exciting mentor-based programs that build science, engineering, and technology skills that inspire innovation and that foster well-founded life capabilities, including self-confidence, communication, and leadership. And whereas thoughtful local visionaries led by local educator and team coach Liz Burgess in his 2005 founded Franklin High School's First Robotics Team 1610, appropriately dubbed the Builders of Tomorrow. And whereas the Builders of Tomorrow, BOT, got started with the help of nearby FIRST Robotics Team 616, who was a regional finalist in 2004. And whereas Franklin's FIRST Robotics Team 1610 entered their initial competition in 2005 at the NASA VCU Regional Competing with their robot MB, where the team and their alliance partners qualified for the first world championship in Atlanta, Georgia, where the team was recognized for an outstanding performance. And whereas since their incredible rookie season, Franklin's FIRST Robotics Team 1610 has continued each year to compete and perform admirably on the regional and state level. And whereas in 2013, Franklin's FIRST Robotics Team 1610 once again achieved elite status with semifinalist finish in the Palmetto Regional. And most recently, with their program, first finalist win to become Virginia Regional Champion, thereby qualifying the team for another trip to the World Championships. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Franklin City Council that the council and the citizens of Franklin will be forever proud of the long hours of effort, hard work, and achievement for all members of 2013 Robotics Team 1610, including the players, mentors, coach, and of course, robot BOT. And furthermore, the City Council and the citizens of Franklin offer their congratulations for the accomplishments thus far. And best wishes to Franklin Robotics Team 1610, our builders of tomorrow, as they continue their quest for another strong finish in the prestigious 2013 World Championships, April 24th to 27th, 2013, in St. Louis, Missouri. Resolved April 8th, 2013 by Franklin City Council and signed by Mayor Johnson Ashburn of Franklin.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt said resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second? It's been moved and properly second to adopt the resolution honoring the Franklin High School 2013 FIRST Robotics Team 1610. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 And aye. So adopted. We have certificates of achievement for your members. And it is our practice to name them so that the names will go down in our official minutes. So, I'm going to try not to mess up the names. This certificate is awarded to Don Shanks, Kyle Johnson, Hank Mummert, Madison Busby, Alex Russell. Oh my gracious, Mr. Foster or Ms. Foster? Jatrez Foster. Sarah Connor, Cindy Mitrovic, Connor Shanks, Elizabeth Connor, Oakley Stoll, Daryl West, Grant Scarborough, Clinton Smith Jr., Elizabeth Burgess. And Elizabeth, in case you all don't know, has some connection to our councilman, Mr. Benny Burgess. Oscar Bab. And I understand that Mr. Bab was a part of the FIRST?
He was our very, one of our very first mentors in 2005. He was with us for about, what Hank, four, two years?
All right. And Dean Kamen. All right. We also have resolutions for Mr. Phelps. Is he still with us? Okay. If you would come up. Ms. Burgess, the robotics team, and anyone else associated with the team, please. And Dr. Bell, if she's still present.
Player, player, we got one of the principals.
Yes.
Well, Dr. Bell, can we get you yours? And give it to her.
We'll give her one more.
Just want to say to the robotics team, we are taking a stance with all of your coaches and principals and saying that we're so proud of you and continue to do your good work. Thank you. Now, you, you all come forward. I want to get you on camera. Now, we're not going to pass these out currently tonight. But we do have the certificates for you, as well as we have cake for you. We cannot share this cake with you, but you go out and enjoy the cake or take it with you. And we thank you.
I'm going to see you before you leave. I'm coming.
You guys are the ones doing all the work.
Proud of you.
Good job. All right.
Y'all do excellent, baby. I know you will. You're going to bring it back. I know that.
Thank you very much. And congratulations to you. Good luck to you.
And now, we're moving forward. We're moving forward with citizens' time. Mr. Herman Parker?
Yes, greetings, everybody. I'm, I'm still dumbfounded about a few things. I heard in the prayer, which I liked, was the prayer that was given tonight about empathy and sympathy for others. I'm failing to realize though, if, how can you pray about somebody like that when you're not doing anything to help somebody like that? When I say that, Rome wasn't built in one day. We can't send all our problems to one man and expect one person to do this. We're asking y'all to work for us because that's what you're hired for. And it's not us working for y'all, it's what we say. And I'm hearing people behind me say, that's right. That's what we're going to get. Because it's putting us off long enough. And it's not going to be stood for anymore. We're the ones that got each and every one of you in office and we can get you out by vote. Just remember that next vote when it comes around.
Thank you. Mr. Bryant Robinson?
Now, I was here last time on the March 18th. And I had spoke about my mother's bill, as well as going to go up. Nothing's done about it. Well, we got a bill again for 19,000, 1,900. And we spoke to, I spoke to Randy Martin. He spoke to me. He actually told me that our lodge wasn't going to go up and to come in today and speak to a lady named Joyce. Well, we, we came in this morning, we spoke to a lady named, she's right here, Grace. And she's telling us things that, that we have a backup pass due that she haven't paid. Now, we, I have receipts saying that my mother has been paying the pass due thing. She's telling us that she don't want to see the receipt. Now, y'all telling us that we need to check the landlord, just the landlord's doing. I spoke to the landlord today and he even came out and said he have nothing to do with electricity. It's, it's y'all that have to deal with electricity. I read in the paper that each and every one of y'all got to do with electricity. You know, we have a man, Macklemore, who stands up to talk for us. Y'all break him down. I mean, come on. You know what I'm saying? If he, if there's a man here helping us as a citizen of Franklin, why not knock him down if we all could just come up with a budget and help one another? See what I'm saying? I've, I've been living out here for four years and out of these four years, my mother's bill's been going up. I had to move from Virginia Beach out here to help my mom. Come on now. I mean, I'm not here to get disgusting or ignorant with everybody, but when there's an unjust thing, y'all, things happen. See, 'cause see, God put y'all out here for a reason and y'all not helping the people. So if y'all not helping the people, it's not us that's gotta sit y'all down. God's gotta use us to break y'all down. 'Cause see, it's an unjust thing. I mean, Proverbs three thirty, Proverbs three thirty-three says, "God curses the house of the inhabitants, of the wicked," and he blesses the jest, the house of the jest. I see wicked all up in here.
Uh, Mr. Robinson, we, we can't have any bashing, but you can speak.
If, if I'm bashing everyone, sorry, but I'm just speaking what the Lord tells me to speak. And I'm speaking what's right. I mean, we all have trouble. We all got little problems, you see, but a thousand nine hundred bill for electric bill? Come on. And then my landlord tells us that he the one that pays sewage for us. Why are we being charged for sewage if we not paying it? If my landlord's paying it? See, I mean, we have a lady that's handicapped in a wheelchair and her bill jumped from a hundred to three hundred. And the landlord told her if she can't pay the rent or the electricity, she got to go. I mean, what can she do about it? She's handicapped and trying to take care of kids. And she live right around the corner from here. You know, see, there's a lot of people. I mean, I mean, if y'all don't hear what I'm saying, that's all good, but see, there's a good Lord has everything and he knows all. So I'm just here to speak this. I mean, y'all do what y'all gotta do. I'm gonna do what I gotta do. I'm taking this to the Lord. He bigger than y'all, bigger than me, bigger than the world. You see, does it's his footstool. He created all of us. He put y'all on this as leadership for the, for this earth. And y'all taking advantage because y'all got power. And we know y'all ain't gonna do nothing about it, but we gotta stay here and fight in a nice way, not violent, but like I said, what can we do but to bring our case to y'all? But like I said, y'all gonna stand here and not listen. I'm just here to speak my, speak my part. Thank you.
Thank you. That was, uh, the first one was Herman Parker, three oh three North High Street. That, the one, the man that just spoke was Bryant Robinson, six twelve North High Street. Rosalyn Saunders. Would you come forward, please? And would everyone state their name and address, please?
Good afternoon. My name is Rosalyn Saunders. My son just spoke to you and I'm the one that has the high light bill, fourteen hundred dollars. I don't have children. I'm a senior. I'm seventy years old. There's no way in the world that my bill should be that high. I don't have kids. I don't know why my bill is so high. I wish you people would please do something about it. I cannot afford that. I'm a senior. I'm a very, I'm on a very low income. There's nothing I can do about it. So I just getting up to let you people know that I cannot afford a fourteen hundred dollar light bill a month. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. Jason B. Drury. Texie Marks.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Council members, Mr. Martin. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of Western Tidewater Free Clinic and its patients. I am Texie Marks. I'm a resident of Southampton County and I'm the Director of Development at the clinic. On behalf of the clinic's board, staff, and volunteers, please know how much we appreciate your continued support of this vital program that serves the cities of Franklin and Suffolk and the counties of Southampton and Isle of Wight. Since opening in two thousand seven, the clinic has served a total of...
Mr. Macklemore, please. This is citizens' time.
Uh, I understand, Ms. Mayor.
This is citizens' time and this lady has signed up. Please don't talk.
Yes, I understand, but this is, this is not a Franklin citizen, as well as this time...
Mr. Macklemore.
To pitch...
Ms. Marks, please continue.
Your, um, charity was supposed to be at five thirty.
No, we can speak at citizens' time or anything. Ms. Marks, please.
Since opening in two thousand seven, the clinic has served a total of two thousand nine hundred and forty-one distinct patients with over fifty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty-four visits and has provided its patients with over eleven million dollars in retail value of donated medications. In two thousand twelve, the clinic served eight percent or one hundred and twenty-four patients who reside in Franklin through one thousand three hundred and two visits. In this year's budget request, the clinic is asking for twenty percent of its total budget and its total budget is one point five million dollars from the municipality served. Thus, we are asking for eight percent from the city of Franklin, equating to twenty-five thousand dollars. This would provide three hundred and eight medical and dental visits for Franklin patients. I would like to take just a minute to tell a patient's story. Mr. T is a forty-seven-year-old male that became a patient of the clinic in August of two thousand ten. His diagnosis included chronic back pain, diverticulitis, reflux, hypertension, elevated lipids, and a recurrent hernia that was repaired in two thousand eight and then again in October of two thousand ten by Dr. Hogg. He had multiple IV treatments at Obacy Hospital that he had to travel from Cortland daily with no income. Several of the clinic's staff members, staff members donated money to fill his truck up with gas. An employee met him at a gas station to pay for the gas as we do not give out cash at the clinic. This employee met, watched a grown man literally cry. He then had an excision of all previous mesh, removal of adhesions, removal of an abdominal wall abscess, and another hernia surgery in April of two thousand twelve by Dr. Ramirez. He has received over four thousand two hundred retail value of medications from the clinic. He became very depressed in two thousand twelve due to his medical conditions which prevented him from working. He had great results from mental health counseling from one of our volunteer providers. As of December two thousand twelve, Mr. T was proudly employed making nine dollars and fifty cents an hour. He told our front desk person that would, he would have died had he not found the clinic. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
I'd like to say, first of all, I am in support of the clinic, but I do, uh, would like to, like an explanation from you, how we could change the agenda without...
The agenda has not been changed.
Well, at five thirty, it says school system outside agencies budget request.
We have always entertained any budget requests or any subject that needed to be dealt with at citizens' time.
Where is the purpose of five thirty?
Our citizens can come before us at citizens' time with any topic.
You just do what you want.
And I just, I'm gonna ask my colleagues to be respectful. Uh, we have asked the citizens to be respectful for, so it's only fair for our colleagues to be respectful also. Mr. Joe McCarthy.
Good evening. I represent the city council. I'm not sure if this is the proper venue after what I just heard, so, and I mean that in a good way. If it's not, then please let me know and I'll stop. Uh, I represent a property owner who's out of state, who owns a large piece of land here in Franklin. And he's asked me, I live in New York, by the way, a little town called South Hall, New York, which is in Suffolk County, right next to Southampton, coincidentally, as well. So we have something in common. Uh, it's a small town. Uh, this gentleman wants to know, basically, is there anything that Franklin offers in the way of, say, a community preservation fund or something like that where there is monies that can be used to buy this so that it doesn't go into development? Understanding what the present financial and real estate climate is these days. It's a little bit better, but it's got a little ways to go in Franklin, from what we understand. And we're trying to find out if you have any type of resources. I spoke with Don in Community Development, uh, last year when I made a trip down and I haven't had any response back from him. He said he was gonna look into a couple of things and I haven't heard, so I made another trip down.
Well, if you would give your number, just write it down, please, if you will, uh, and give your number to our city manager, Mr. Martin. Uh, he will respond to you. Or he will have Mr. Goodwin respond to you. You will get a response. Thank you. Reverend Johnson.
To Mayor Johnson Ashburn, Vice Mayor Chita, the city council, Mr. Martin, Mr. Williams, good evening.
Good evening.
We faced, we face this afternoon a difficult task. Difficult task for the citizens, difficult task for the city council, city government. And that is the high light bill. About a thousand people stand in jeopardy of being put out of their homes in the form of public housing. Where public, those in public housing, if, if their lights go off, they have to move. And their voucher comes in jeopardy by the state. So just think, if we lose a thousand people in the city of Franklin, which we cannot afford tax revenue, it will affect the businesses, Walmart, the restaurants, uh, the local businesses. It will affect the school system as well. We need to work together, become proactive. This is not a case by case. I've, I've had some of the results and studies of some of the things that the city have checked. They have not found problems. But we need to become more proactive and get this problem resolved. I've done some research and the term of the research is called electrical arcing. Electrical arcing is when the electricity leaves the pole, goes into the residence, and comes back out. The meter picks up other electricity that's not going into the house, but the meter reads that. So when the city reads the meter, it shows that you're using more kilowatts, but those kilowatts have not gone into the house. I talked with, uh, later today in Roanoke. Roanoke had a similar situation where their electrical department, uh, the grid was old. It needed updating. Roanoke had that problem. Newport News has had that problem. Franklin has that problem. Let us become proactive. Let us come together, work together, and love peace and harmony. We can do it as a city, but we need your help as a city council because you're in charge of that. You can initiate the investigation so we can get this problem resolved so Franklin can go on, move on, and be a great city that it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Yvonne Holiday.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor, Mayor Johnson Ashburn, here. I'm here today because...
Would you give us your address, please?
Oh, um, two-two-eight-three Elmwood Drive. I live in Isle of Wight County. Only thing I pay to the city of Franklin is utility. And I'm here today because, um, this is my first time really in one of the meetings. I've just been catching up on the internet and reading the paper and, um, I'm really concerned, like, I'm standing up for my mom. And I came down last Wednesday to talk to Ms. Joyce, I don't know her last name. And, um, I asked her to show me how to read the meter, what percentage was charged. I want to educate myself before I confront, or, you know, to someone about the bill. And I wanted to make sure my mom wasn't carrying the bill over from month to month and she was paying them all clear and, um, and I looked at the weather from last year to this year. It hasn't been any colder. And I asked her, is she doing anything different? Okay, because I got my bill from December, January, and February of last year, compared to this year, and my watts. For some reason, my watts had went up, but I know that I haven't been doing anything different because I work ten hours shift. I'm not there. I don't leave my heat on in my house. And I was asking her the same and I've been asking a lot of other residents that, um, have, what have they been doing different? And so we really know that something is going on. If someone been in that home for the last ten or fifteen years and we know we've been having some cold weather, colder than the years that have passed, this December, January, and February, if they might been in the spike then, what is really going on? We know it is something. And like, we can't pinpoint it. And I know that, I hope y'all are concerned that y'all have a citizen that light bill for the last so many years had only been this amount and now it's jumped up to a thousand. Like, they really using a commercial unit instead of residential unit. It, it should consent, uh, concern to someone to let, let them know what is really going on. And for them not to say they don't want to get a people extension when you have someone, say they on a fixed income and their bill had been for the last so many months, this and it spiked up to three or four thou, um, hundred dollars. I think they should work with them. You have the RIS. Everybody has worked with people, set up a payment plan. Long you, um, making an offer to play, um, pay that, I think the people should pay, help their resident. Now, if you don't help your resident, I mean, what can they say about the city of Franklin? Like, in March, the twenty-eighth, I happened to wake, I was in Georgia and Winnet County and this out, and I woke up to the news and it was a young man that fell on hard time. He had a choice to make, pay his mortgage or pay his utility. He had to pay his mortgage. It was a wife and three kids. And he had to heat his house with the generator. And I know y'all where I'm going with this. He ended up dying and his four-year-old child died. The other two were in critical condition. We don't want that. We don't want that to happen in Franklin. If someone is coming to you all with a high utility bill like this later and on a fixed income, I think, I think some, something can be done. Set up a payment plan. Work with them. Do something, you know. Keep going to the social service and stuff. They gonna run out of money. And like I said, and, and it's sad, I was sitting here to see what happened between you two. That really hurt because y'all represent the people of Franklin. You know, that, and it really hurt to see us too. Y'all know where I'm going with this, to do this, to disrespect because we have a disagreement. I've been told, try to keep open mind here. Let's have this behind closed door. Let's still respect one another, regardless if she out of place or is he out of place or she out of place. Let's still respect for one another, okay? And then at the same time, help y'all citizens. My light bill is a little bit higher, but I'm not gonna complain because Lord knows he's helping me with it. But when it's taking an extra fifty or sixty dollars out my pocket that I can be putting into my 401K in my retirement, y'all messing with my money. You know, and everything, but help y'all citizens. Please help your citizens. Do whatever y'all can do because we don't want what happened in Winnet County, Georgia, to happen there in Franklin.
Thank you. Are there any amendments to the agenda? If not, we'll move on to consent agenda. Resolution, uh, I'm sorry, the city council minutes from the March twenty-fifth meeting. Are there any corrections?
There are some corrections as far as, um...
Hunter instead of Cobb. That's under the public hearing portion. And also corrections under citizens' time. Please review Mary Barnes' statement. Uh, I think it's something wrong with that. Uh, I think it's something wrong with that, so if you would review that. And then Marsha Barnes' former residence was Hall Street, not Carl Street. Is there something else?
Page three at the top, the second paragraph, the second line, talks about a 5% required, but doesn't say what 5% required is. Needs a contingency.
In light of the mistakes, or the mishaps on the, in these minutes, is there a consensus to send them back and vote on them next meeting? So, Mr. Martin?
They were rather lengthy, so we'll be glad to do that.
All right. We have public hearing for the Virginia Department of Transportation Beautification Project.
Could just have one minute. Melissa's gonna help us with getting the PowerPoint brought up. If, if it's okay with you, I can start with some brief introductory comments. Tonight, we're here to talk about the VDOT Comprehensive Roadside Management Program, and I have with me Mr. Proctor Harvey with Sage Certified Incorporated. He's from Lynchburg. He's got a brief PowerPoint presentation that he'll give to you all to go over the program. And it's basically an ability for localities to take over the maintenance of VDOT right-of-way through no cost to the locality. It's funded through donations by private businesses and, but allows the property to be maintained. And so we'd like to ask that we could participate in this program in light of the marketing initiatives that we're trying to undertake along Highway 58. There's some ramps there that could use increased maintenance, as well as other business-related intersections throughout the city of Franklin. So that's what he's going to be talking to you about tonight. You have a aerial map that was in your agenda packet that he may reference throughout his remarks, if you could pull that out. And there was a revised map given out tonight. Hopefully, you have that at your seats.
No.
So, I'll turn it now.
We don't have a map.
It's on you.
Oh, it's got it right here.
Oh, okay. Just a minute, let me...
It was on the, it was in the agenda package, but this is a paper copy.
Oh, okay.
A little easier to see.
Yeah, it, it was in your online agenda, and then here's a paper copy for you tonight that Mr. Harvey may reference throughout his presentation. So if, if there are no questions, I'll turn it over to him at this point in time. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, council members, I want to thank you for allowing me to come and speak. We have been to Franklin a number of times. Been through this lovely city. I know you have a lot to be proud of here. I want to introduce this program just briefly to you. It's called the Comprehensive Roadside Management Program. It is a VDOT program, which allows private donations to be made for gardens to be placed in the right-aways, which could be, of course, at your choice. And what we are doing here, this board is the same one that you have in your packet. And it essentially is locating some specific gardens to use as options for improvements. And the beauty of the program, just to give you a little bit of history, I'd started this program 20 years ago in Lynchburg, and it is a renewable program. It's sustainable. The, the uniqueness is no person, company, or business can put a sign in a right-of-way. It's a federal law and a state law. This program is the one program that allows a person who makes a civic donation to be recognized with a standardized sign. There are only three choices of color. They're very unique. No lights, no neon, no, no gaudiness. And, and in that 20 years, our program has raised almost $2 million. We're just a little bit bigger than Franklin, and we think it's a lot of money. It's a great way to have recognition for the people, or citizens, or businesses that would like to beautify Franklin. Our program is unique right now in that it is renewable. Each five years, that donation is, comes around again, I guess is the best way to put that. And in our program in Lynchburg, we have about a quarter of a million dollars just in a fund that has built up over the years. We would see this happening in Franklin. And I know you're going to have some questions. I see some, some interested looks, but number one, it is approved by VDOT. It's approved by the Federal Highway Administration. We have this program in a number of other cities in the state of Virginia. We're working in Alta Vista, Lynchburg. We hope to be in Franklin. We're doing a program in Hampton right now. It is extremely unique. It's, it's, we're, we're getting calls from lots of cities all over the state. So with that, I'll, I'll hand out a brochure that might help understand, but I'm certainly available to answer your questions. It may sound too good to be true, but it's one of those unique programs that does not cost the citizenry, does not cost the town of Franklin any money. And when a program like that, or any type, can have this benefit and not be an expense to the citizens, it is, it's just a wonderful program. It's really the most unique win-win program I've ever been associated with. It has a triple bottom line, which is a happy donor, a happy city, and a beautification for your city. Maintenance, these donation levels are set at a level that will pay for the garden and pay for maintenance over a given period of time. We typically help you set that donation level. It is for five years, and so the funding has to be at a level that will install the garden and give the town of Franklin, city of Franklin enough money to maintain it for that period of time. So.
We, do you have any questions before the public port hearing?
It is answered by him.
Okay. Do you have a PowerPoint or something?
I do, yes.
Okay.
Let me do this rather quick. Can you all see it okay? Would it help to dim the lights? All right, okay. What I will do is try to get out of your way, but it is a Comprehensive Roadside Management, okay? These are some pictures that we have of other programs that we've done in different cities. It, it works, it's, here, right? It, it's a, it works at any economic time. Essentially, once you have a, an interested party that wants to donate, we've had individuals, small businesses, large businesses, and corporations. It's, it's just a, a great way to beautify your city. You all have done a beautiful job with the Gateway Program. This could be a very nice complement to that. This is some of the people who have participated in our program. You'll see that there are small Landtech, Cycle Systems, all the way up to Remax, Walmart, Golden Corral, Bank of America. These are major companies. They are very excited about the program. We, we've gotten donations in many different cities, okay? It's, it's supported, there's some municipal support, and that essentially does not cost dollars. It is a way that we need a liaison. There would be a person similar to what Amanda has done, and I know she's worked with Mr. Martin in, in, in putting this program idea together. And the funding actually will go to pay or reimburse any kind of expense. It's a, it's a fully reimbursable for any cost that comes up. We are meeting VDOT requirements. These are some examples of what we had in Lynchburg. We had some areas that were really so ugly. Our Economic Development Director would not even drive down our main expressway. So he would take people the back way. That was one of them. And that's what it looks like now, okay? Here's another one, right on our expressway where refrigerators and washing machines were dumped on the side of the road. And now, it is like this. Go ahead. There's a few more examples. Another section of the expressway, and this is what it looks like now. It's almost park-like, right? This is a roadway still on that same expressway. And there's the beautification picture. These are some shots of a, a couple different cities. One is in Rocky Mount, two are in Lynchburg, one is in Alta Vista. And it, it's just a wonderful way to recycle and, and bring in money to maintain and, and make the project work, okay? A couple more pictures. This also can incorporate stormwater, which is where the Sage term comes from. Those gardens are more costly, because in stormwater, you have to have a filter medium and, and plant them. But that's a very strong element that we're doing right now, especially in cleaning up the Chesapeake Bay, okay? This is a cost-share program with Chesapeake 2000, and there's some examples of rain gardens and step pools and bioswales that we're designing, okay? And as I went through Franklin, I, I took some pictures of spots that have wonderful opportunities. And you'll see, of course, on Route 58, at Armory, you all have already done some nice improvements. But at, at South Street, where it intersects it, you know, it's kind of a pine tunnel. We did this program in South Hill, which is, if you follow 58, we were able to clean up an interchange that just looks so much better now, okay? Here's an example of, of one of the garden areas, and then the overlay shows how it can be retrofitted, okay? It can be retrofitted to be a, a rain garden, if you should desire. Can be done originally or to follow. Some more pictures, Route 58 and 58 West at Pretlow. There's some beautiful turning lanes there that would give great opportunities for corporations that may already be in Franklin, or may be coming to Franklin and looking at opportunities. Some wonderful ways for those people to get recognition for their civic donation, okay? Just a couple more examples of how the ditches are usually always there, so the stormwater element is controlled. A rain garden or bioswale can be added, and it is extremely effective and helps you meet your TMDL regulations, total maximum daily loads for Chesapeake Bay. And I, that's a, that's a part of it if you want to incorporate it. A few other areas that, that I saw that had great opportunity. Hunterdale Road has, has some areas that would look very attractive with gardens. Delaware, right at that intersection, that's a good opportunity. Amanda, go ahead. Essentially, it's achieving a balance in, in complimenting or recognizing people that have civic donations. And I, I realized just driving around tonight on Armory, right before it gets to the residential zone, there's some beautiful, small areas that are parallel to the road, that are right off the road, and they may be 20, 30 feet wide. Great opportunities for a donor to have a recognition sign there in a garden. It's got a lot of positiveness. We're, we're very excited about it, as you hope can tell, okay? A couple more. South Street at, at South College Drive, it's a big open area there, has a good opportunity. Obviously, it needs to be publicly owned land, or, or typically would be. And then North College Drive at Stewart. I did not go into detail to find out if every area was public right-of-way, but that's the area that you'd take advantage of and get the gardens installed, okay? That's South Street at 58. And just on South Street, right behind your entry sign, your Welcome to Franklin sign, there's a long median. Be a beautiful place to have a garden, and a tremendous amount of people that would like the recognition. We actually have, just in Lynchburg, 92 donors with, with over 100 gardens. Donors can be, there can be two signs and a garden, or one sign. So there's a, it's a lot of opportunity, and it's sustainable, because every five years, the garden is available to renew, okay? These are some of the locations that we have garden, Leaf, the Leaf Project or CRMP Project in already. We, we have, it's amazing, we have donors that just come out of the woodwork, small firms, large firms, corporations. And I, I don't want to bore you with it, but I would love to answer any questions you might have. Are there?
What we're gonna do is open the public hearing.
Okay.
And then come back, and council can discuss it and ask questions.
Be fine. Thank you.
And now, we'd like to open the public hearing. Are there any persons wishing to speak? Ms. Jarrett?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak in favor of this program tonight. As Mr. Harvey explained, this program does really allow the best of both worlds. It allows us to continue our efforts to beautify the city of Franklin at no cost to the city, which is a rare type of program to be able to participate in. But it also serves our business community as well. It allows businesses, as you mentioned, to obtain signs in locations that are not otherwise permitted. So we can take advantage of the civic donation that's offered, and they in turn can receive an advertising sign that allows them to strengthen their business as well. So I see a lot of opportunity for this program. We're trying to take proactive efforts, especially along the 58 corridor, as we did at your last meeting. This only complements those efforts, and so I would ask you to be supportive tonight and allow us to begin to take advantage of this program. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Never miss an opportunity. I've looked at this program in other places, because other Virginia main streets have been working on this. Alta Vista is one, Rocky Mount is one. Lynchburg has, has been the pilot that has done a lot of good work with it. I think the, the premise that it doesn't cost our citizens to beautify our city and make it attractive for whether it's business, or new residents, or whatnot, is, is due merit. And any way that the, the group can pull together to keep that, programs like that moving forward, to keep our city beautiful, I think it's, it's worth, worth being positive. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak? Now, we'd like to close the public hearing portion and entertain council discussion. Mr. Harvey?
Do you mind just stepping through? Okay, let's say we approve what, and we get the program running, what typically, who goes and gets the businesses? Is there a way to contact them? You just wait for people to, if you build it, they will come kind of a thing? Or do you go out and get them and, and that will just the process?
Typically, the process has been that there is a promotional book that's developed, and we'll have some of that in this program that we would do. And the promotional book works with a fundraising team, either a court or committee. We, we found that it's good to have grassroots businesses or a civic leader rather than somebody in government. And if that, if there's a person who is interested in that or could do that, does not take a large group of people, usually two or three, often there's a retired real estate agent, a banker, or someone like that, and they help promote the program. The program is, is developed at civic clubs. It's great to have newspaper advertising. If there's a garden that started, it's great to have a kickoff program. So, from that point, then, what we typically do is suggest, about every six months, have a push to raise funds, to, to get donations. Once the Lynchburg program got going, we started with twelve gardens. And donors who said, you know, we, we anticipated that. Our fundraiser had eighteen gardens. We thought it would be a hundred thousand dollars. He was able to raise two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the first phase. Economic times were better, but it still works in, in less good economic times. But that's the process. Once you get some gardens installed, people start to say, gee, Wes, I could have my sign there. I'd like to make that civic donation, and have, have that recognition.
Who sets the, the contribution, the donation amount? Is that set by state, or is that a local decision, or?
It is, uh, it's, it's somewhat both. We, uh, when this was, when this program was adopted by the state of Virginia, I spent about eight or nine months going to Richmond to write the regulations, and it's based solely on our program. The way it works is, there's a minimum donation of seventy-five hundred dollars if you want a sign. Sometimes, two or three small groups get together and make a donation. Or, if it's on an interstate, which you don't have, it's higher, it's eighty-five hundred. But, you can have two donors at one location. Minimum seventy-five hundred dollars. We generally see donations of about ten thousand dollars. You know, it sounds like a lot, but it's for five years. They only donate one time for five years. We find that companies are just overly excited to make that, that step and make that donation. The donation, again, has to be at a reasonable size or amount, so that the city of Franklin can use those funds to continue their maintenance of those, those garden areas. Once it gets started, it, it does take, we suggest, twice a year, a, a, a method whereby you promote it again. We did find in Lynchburg that people didn't want to write a check to the city of Lynchburg. We had a nonprofit that was able to control the process. Checks were written to the nonprofit. So, that helped a lot. We found that, you know, people said, we pay our taxes. You know, we, we don't want to keep paying. So, the nonprofit helped a lot in, in doing that, in, in helping monitor the funds and, and run the program.
Any other questions?
And when you start it, you just start like in one particular area and let it spread out from there, like we would do? Like, say, the 58 corridor, and then move from that area? Do you hit different places around the city?
If, if you have the, um, the printout that we did, which looks like that board. I'm turning the board around so the citizenry can see. But it's like this. And, in that, we have located twelve potential sites, but up to maybe thirty gardens. And, that's, that gives a lot of opportunity. The unique part is, if we find, you find somebody that says, you know, I want to be at this place, and it's not a designated garden. If it fits the mold and it's in your right of way, you make it happen. What we typically do is, is try to promote that, so that the, the people who could make that donation find an opportunity somewhere that they like. There, there are hotels, um, we're working on one in South Hill right now. There's a group of hotel owners that want to have an area opened up and beautified. So, if you can have, you can only have two sign panels at one garden location. Fifty-eight is a beautiful opportunity because of the, the traffic there.
And does the, the city staff keeps the gardens up? Is that what I understood you said?
Well, you can do that. It's interesting, the way we put the regulations together can be in con services. You may have a landscape contractor that says, you know, I really want to be in the program, but I don't have ten thousand dollars. So, you work out an agreement with that contractor to say, he'll take care of five gardens for five years, and he gets a, a garden location himself, with his own sign. That's good connectivity, because that guy's going to take a lot better care of the garden than somebody you might hire. And it's a good way to complement and get more people involved in the program. So, in-con services work fine. We've actually had contractors who might be building a road for us. And we go pat them on the back and say, wouldn't you like to participate? And we'll give you a sign. One of our contractors gave us fifty thousand dollars' worth of grading and, and work in his off-season. He was a, he was a road builder. So, there are lots of opportunities that might not come to mind right of way for groups that work for the city. As long as they're significant, that we would think would be very happy to participate. You don't twist their arm, but just a little bit, but you tell them what a wonderful program it is, and how it recognizes their civic contribution to Franklin.
And I'm gonna call Marie Eppfees, for lack of a better word, the second five years.
Right.
Is that a greatly reduced price, I would assume, at that point in time, because the garden's paid for, or?
Well, it is, Mr. Vice Mayor, but you want, you've got to have enough money to carry the maintenance on for the next five years. In Lynchburg, we still have about eighty percent of the first donation charge. A plant bed does not take a lot of money. I mean, it can be pretty extravagant, if, and if it's a bioswale, it's, it's more. But you want to have enough money in your, uh, in your fund to be able to do the maintenance, no matter whether it's in-con or not. So, we typically encourage you not to do a small amount. We, we, we will be happy to, to give you our experience over the last twenty years, how the program has worked, and the many facets in, in the way it can be adapted and, and adopted for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
You, you talked about a landscape contractor donating services, picking up fable gardens. Do the businesses have the opportunity to provide the manpower? For a garden, or is it strictly the business has to put up cash and, like, the group? If you have a large business, they provide the manpower to go and take care of that garden for five years?
That would work fine. It's up to the city to decide. If it's a garden club, they're probably not going to do it. If it's a strong business, and you want to work at an agreement with them, then it's a wonderful way to get them involved. We've had smaller businesses that have said, I really want to participate, but I don't have ten thousand dollars. So, the city might look at an option to make a one-third payment now, one-third in a year, and one-third in a year. They still have three more years. The key would be making sure you're comfortable with who would be on the right of way. Especially if it's in the city, there's not much of a problem. You don't have the high-speed and limited access. If it's on 58, you have to meet certain VDOT requirements of the vest, the hard hat. You have to have a crash truck, the things that the contractors generally have. So, of course, if you're off of that, even on an off-ramp, you're okay, if you're not on the main line. There's so much I could go on and on about, and I'd be happy to do that. But, um, we, we have, we'll have a donation that a bank has made, and the bank changes names. Well, immediately, they, they want to re-up and have their name there. If a business goes out of business, we typically put up a sign on it, a plastic sign that says "Available," and a phone number. And it's usually taken within a month or two.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Does count?
I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll wait to see if you have any other questions.
We're gonna see if council has any desired action right now.
Okay.
Is there any desired action by council?
City manager, have a comment?
Yes, I'd, I'd recommend that we participate in this. I think this would go a long ways to jump-starting some of the efforts we've already done with regard to enhancing our corridor along US 58. Also, Donald is out of town this week and on vacation. And, uh, he and I have already discussed it, and he's, he will be bringing this and getting input from the Beautification Commission. They have already done some work. This council previously authorized a gateway plan, that this will give us an opportunity to implement elements of that plan that have not been implemented to date. So, I, I would highly recommend approval and coordinating with FSCDI and Mr. Proctor Harvey and others to get a program mapped out. If the council approves the resolution, next steps will be, we'll hold the public comment period open to comply with VDOT requirements for fourteen days. But at the conclusion of that, we would move forward with it if you approve the resolution.
There is a memorandum from Ms. Jarrett. And at the bottom, the recommended action states that in the fourteen, also includes the fourteen days public comment. The recommendation also is to adopt the resolution. Is there a motion?
Certainly.
It, it's been moved and properly second to adopt the resolution for the Virginia Department of Transportation Beautification Project. Are there any questions? If not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Names have the same opportunity.
Aye.
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 An aye. Resolution so adopted, and we are now taking part in the Transportation Beautification Project. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
And now, we will move on to the next public hearing for the Virginia Public School Authority Capital Project Financing Resolution. Mr. Martin, do you have anything that you'd like to lead in with?
Not a lot for the council's sake. We, we've discussed this in, in a work session format with the schools' representatives. But I'll defer, if it's agreeable with the mayor, to, directly to Melissa Rollins, who will hit the highlights for, before the public hearing, for the public's sake. And again, the city council's action is to determine whether to approve the funding. The school board has established the priority uses of the money. If you agree with the total amount, then they could move forward with this. And, you're aware of the schedule, but I'll defer to Melissa for further comment.
Good evening, Mayor Ashburn, Vice Mayor Chittam. To all the other council members, Mr. Martin and Mr. Williams, good evening to all citizens. As Mr. Martin alluded to, at the previous council meeting, Dr. Bell did give council an overview of the proposed projects to be financed with the one point eight nine million dollars for the Virginia Public School Authority Spring Pool Bond Sale. And you do have an attachment of those projects in your agenda material. The purpose of the meeting tonight is twofold. Number one is to conduct the public hearing as required, in accordance with Virginia Code Section 15.2-2606. And we do want to advise city council and the public that this public hearing has been duly published in the local newspaper, and it was advertised for the two consecutive weeks as required. The amount of the proceeds that's being requested is two million twenty thousand dollars, which does include two things, the cost of issuance, and also the five percent contingency that is required. A preliminary debt service schedule, as mentioned in the prior meeting, indicated that there were favorable interest rates. Those rates ranged from two point zero five percent to two, to three point three percent during the twenty-year loan period. Also, during the fiscal year fourteen budget, the city will be required to budget a thirty-six thousand dollars interest-only payment for that particular fiscal year. And our subsequent payments, principal and interest, over the life of the loan are estimated to be about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Second fold is the resolution that needs to be adopted this evening, which basically authorized the bond issuers and execution of the bond sale agreement. And this has to be done no later than April 12th, in accordance with the Virginia Public School Authority Financing Schedule. So, after the public hearing, council will be requested to authorize the resolution that has been forwarded to you.
Ms. Rollins, if you would stay ni, stay close, we're gonna open the public hearing up. Uh, do you have any preliminaries, though, for, for Ms. Rollins? All right. We will now open the public hearing for the Virginia Pu, Public School Authority Capital Project Financing Resolution. Is there anyone wishing to speak? Is there anyone wishing to speak? Is there anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none. We will close the public hearing and entertain discussion by council.
In our previous borrowings and what we've done, we've put out a list of projects, and then, we have time to kind of negotiate through, once we get the money decided. We have eighteen months to spend the money, do it, do what we want to within the parameter, but they're not specific. I get the impression that this is not that way, that if they put a bus in, they have to buy a bus. Do they have flexibility to adjust the projects, or is this going to be what they're funding?
Melissa, you want to comment first, then I'll follow, or I can go first? Anyway, go ahead.
I believe you're absolutely correct, Councilman Burgess. I do recall that these particular financings years ago, you could sort of kind of have language in the resolution that kind of did not bind you to any specific projects. And speaking with our bond council, I do believe that that has changed over time, and I'm sure it's due to some legal reasons why it has, and by which, in both the advertisement and the resolution, you have to kind of narrow it down to specific projects. I won't go as far as to say there is just no flexibility whatsoever. For an example, if, if it's indicated that it will be used to do certain school renovations, then, of course, there may be some parameter within those, within those renovations. But I do know that bond council specifically advised that we need to have some specifications, both in the hearing notice and in the resolution, as to what the projects, what the particular projects would be.
I think the kind of flexibility you probably see is, if you were going to buy one piece of equipment, and you decided to do another one, I think you probably wouldn't have a huge problem. But, the, the, I, I think the key to it is you'd have to accomplish the capital needs that you listed. If you ended up having some efficiencies and were able to buy two buses instead of one bus, I don't think that'd be a problem. But if you didn't do the roofs that you listed, you probably couldn't do that. That'd be my, my rec, my, my expectation. Because unusual to this one, not like the one the city did in December, they, they had to have plans and specs for all of these capital projects and exact, or not exact, but pretty good pricing, as the state actually reviewed it. I guess they've had some experience with communities that weren't really ready, and they threw something out there, and then they didn't have enough money to do it. So, I assume that's part of the motivation.
That's right. And there are also spinning exceptions, meaning that the projects have to be done in a certain period of time. So, if you don't have those fine-tuned, then you run into issues with your bond in terms of those spinning exceptions, so.
I was just gonna say, a lot, a lot of times when you get your estimate, you know, you think you're gonna get it, well, you get the job done for a hundred thousand, and then it costs you a hundred and fifty. We have less, that happens.
I think that's why the five percent is there, is, is either, for several reasons. But I think that's one of the reasons that you've got something built in, that you should be able to accomplish what you've said. But it's still a risk, anytime you do projects. And I would imagine if you had really good reasons for modifying it, that, that, that might go okay. But, uh, haven't done one of these, so I don't know how flexible the VPSA authority really is.
So, question to piggyback. The, 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 the projects that are gonna be done.
You want me to review those?
Okay, that would be good. But, my, my question probably in the end would be, does, that ha, that has to be a part of the resolution, and it is. So, once we adopt the resolution, that's the way it is. Just going back to his, his question.
Unless it's modified, yeah, unless it's modified in a later time. Well, I assume that locally, you could modify it if something changed, but it would have to be probably approved by the authority and the bondholders.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, if you would go through the project?
Just to replace bleachers at the, at Morton, SP Morton, replace the ovens there. It's actually replacing ovens at all three schools. Roof replacement. Roof replacement at J.P. King, replacing heating and air conditioning units at J.P. King. Roof restoration at Franklin High School, and closing the second and third halls of that school. School buses, and at this point, one is what I understand is funded if, unless there's more funds to do more than one bus. Roof repair at Charles Street Gym and resurfacing of the track at the high school. And that's the $1,898,734 basic projects dollars that are allocated. You do have a 5% contingency and the cost of issuance, which I believe they estimated $15,000. And that brings it to the $2,020,000.
No, go ahead.
I appreciate the work with schools and gun, and I don't mean this question to not appreciate what you've done, but you kind of did this hurriedly. Are we sure we got all the right priorities? Because we did it so fast that we.
Put something together to meet.
Need a bond need, because I mean, this is pretty good sum of money. And I know all these things need to be done. I've been to the Charles Street Gym. I probably ate at the, had the food out of the oven at the high school when I was in high school here. I can tell it's been a long time, but I just want to make sure that we have some assurance that this is the right priority for these busses.
Can I come in? Sure. I'd like to come in on that. Mr. Burgess, I think I can speak a little bit on that. I think that this has, this was talked about before. I mean, even when I was on the board, we talked about those bleachers. I think I brought it up a thousand times. They needed them. The breezeway, we had already talked about that, and we did some security, but this was another part of the breezeway. The buses, that's years of talking about the buses, I mean, old buses. They do, they definitely need them. And it's not a new thing, especially with the ovens. As building and grounds, I had continued to say, look, we have to do some things. I think we did some small portions of some things, but these things are so old that I think they were there when I was there in 1902. And I don't, I don't think it's, I really don't think it's a rush thing not to disagree with you, or agree to disagree. I think there's been some time put into this, as, you know, a number of years, as I was on the school board, to talk about this.
I guess from our perspective, not having been privy to those conversations, from our perspective.
Yeah, and I can understand that.
We started talking about it two or three months ago, now we're ready to go. It's fine, as long as we.
Yeah, yeah. But it's been some long talk about that. Okay, thank you.
We do appreciate Mrs.
Come up to the mic, please.
Mrs. Murphy's comments, and she's exactly right. She has that awareness, and we appreciate that, Mrs. Murphy.
I think when we looked at the need to do the capital improvement plan, we had a whole list of things. But if you notice, we placed them in a four-year format, or out-years, four out-years. That enabled us then to go back and look at those things of the greatest necessity. And we put those in that first year. That is what you have represented there, but we have far more needs than are cited. But when we looked at maybe being realistic in terms of the amount of money that we would likely get, and in trying to, at the same time, place things in proper years in case there are other things in the city that might be needed, then we did end up with that list that you have before you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. Other comments?
One final question. We've got a school at S.P. Morton, we need classrooms coming up in, I think, three years or four years. Mr. Manager, do you see us being able to, will this have an impact on being able to perform those, that construction project when that comes up?
Well, based upon my touring of those facilities, I think by that time, they're going to really need to be replaced. And I don't believe it would impair our ability to do it, to do this, because we'd probably be doing them just in reverse order. As you know, early on, the two things that were on this list, tentatively back when the city council and school board had a couple of work sessions in the fall, was the classroom and the serving line improvements at the schools. The serving line improvements, they really wanted to put, that's only $45,000 for all three schools, so they really wanted those in the project, but were unable to finalize the documentation necessary to get those in. With regard to the building, once we saw this VPSA requirements for a construction project, you actually have to have an engineer engage, you've had to have gone through the school's discussion about needs and design, and you're talking about probably six months to 12 months to get all that done. And so it wasn't a practical matter to include that in this project. However, during that discussion and the school's evaluation since the fall, I think that's, and I'm not wanting to speak on behalf, but listening to their conversation, the roof replacements came into being, and everyone realized how long it had been, and the warranty situation was expiring, and they were worried about the risk of letting those expire and the additional cost that that might incur if that happened. And as we all know, roofs is a big item with schools. And when you look at the volume of money in this borrowing that's slated for roof repairs, we'd have to do that two years from now or three years from now. So I think that more or less took out the classrooms, which wasn't practical to do in this borrowing. So I really don't, to answer your question in a long answer, I really don't think this will prohibit or impede us from meeting the classroom needs there in three or four years. And I hope the schools will go ahead and engage that architect, go through the process, which is lengthy of design, and be prepared to put forward some type of financing proposal a couple of years down the road. And you brought up a point at the last meeting, if interest rates are looking like they're going to start going back up, we may want to do that sooner than later, and just add on new debt to what we have now, maybe not wait three years. And I hope that they will, that's why I hope they will proceed quickly to get that planning done, so that if that's a detractive environment next year or the year after, we can go ahead and expedite that. Because they need it. Those classrooms need to be replaced with real brick and mortar steel structure, not modulators that are over 10 years old.
Anyone else? I have to say that upon considering this resolution, I guess my first would be our immediate need, and that's the ability to pay the debt service in the proposed budget or budget that's forthcoming. I also had the question about the impact it would have on replacing the modulators or some type of future school plan. And we have taken steps to level our debt to keep from raising taxes, so that is a concern.
And it's a good thing we did that when we did, or I would be very hard pressed to tell you that we can do this this year without a significant impact on the budget. But fortunately, the refinancing that the city did of its old debt, including school debt, has put us in a position where we can reasonably consider things like this, which need to be done. I think the capital spending for the schools has been very, very small in the last several years. No fault of anybody, it's just not been available because of factors that the city couldn't control, that I won't rehash tonight, that we talked about during our goal-setting sessions.
Are there any other comments? If not, is there a desired motion by council?
We're looking for a motion on the resolution.
On the resolution?
I move that we approve the resolution authorizing the issuance of not exceeding $2,020,000 in general obligation school bonds of the City of Franklin, Virginia. Series 2013A to be sold to Virginia Public School Authority providing for the form and details thereof.
Is there a second? It's been moved and probably second to adopt said resolution. Are there any questions? Hearing none, I'd like to ask you to signify by saying aye. Nays have the same opportunity.
Aye.
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 An aye.
Resolution so adopted. We have some school projects that are going to be financed.
May I ask, and if the city attorney can direct me, but can we also, I believe, get the motion to actually execute the bond sale agreement? Do we need to make that as part of the motion as well?
Is that in the resolution?
I don't think that's actually in the resolution.
That's not in the resolution, but I believe, and I want to take a minute to double check whether or not we need to say that we're actually executing the bond sale agreement.
Number two, sale of bonds.
It won't hurt to go ahead and.
The agreement shall be in substantial, in substantially the form submitted to the council at this meeting, which form is hereby approved, the bond sale agreement. That's under number two, sale of bonds.
I think, I think she's referring to authorizing all officials that are required to execute the documents. Yeah.
And I'm double checking with the instructions from VPSA, the CVP's.
Do you have a resolution drafted, or do we want to just?
I think just a motion.
That's just the bond sale agreement that is attached to the resolution. It's not a resolution. It's not a part of the resolution.
Just authorize an execution of the bond sale agreement by the appropriate officials at, as part of the closing.
Actually, I agree with the mayor. It's already in item number two of the resolution. It authorizes the mayor, the vice mayor, and the city manager are authorized and directed to enter into a bond sale agreement dated April 12, 2013. So I think it's covered in that language.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we will move on to old and new business. Memorandum of Understanding for the Virginia Volunteer Workstation Solutions Chief and, well, our city manager, do you have any lead-in comments?
No, sir. No, ma'am. I'll let the chief do it.
Chief Holt?
He has a letter to distribute to you that summarizes this program.
Thank you.
Coming before you is just a cover letter that did not make it in with your agenda package, but it's basically just a brief summary of the volunteer workforce solutions opportunities that we have. The Virginia Fire Chiefs Association has, actually back in 2009, received a grant through FEMA. And the purpose of the grant was to assist fire departments across the Commonwealth of Virginia with recruitment and retention of volunteers. It's actually a two-phase program, and phase one, there was 20 different fire departments that participated in the, in the program. And phase two is getting ready to open up. We became aware of phase two, and basically, we submitted an application to be considered as a department to be a part of the phase two study. We did a joint application. We did a joint application with Franklin Fire and Rescue and Hunterdale Volunteer Fire Department. Our application was favorably looked at, looked at, and they asked us to participate in a phone interview, which myself, Deputy Chief Carr, Chief Lai from Hunterdale, and also one of our volunteer captains from Franklin Fire and Rescue, who also serves as our president of our volunteers, we all participated in the phone interview. And we were notified the following day. The interview actually took place on the March 27th, and we were notified the following day that they would like for us to participate in phase two of this, this program. The, in your agenda package, there was some information that was submitted to you talking about the program and the expectations of, of the program. The program is designed to be very low-cost to the localities. The only cost that we would incur, there are two meetings that we are required to go to. The way the meetings are set up, they do them at central locations across the Commonwealth, and typically is set up to where you can go and make a day trip, go to the meeting, and return back to your locality, where the only investment that you have is your time in the meeting and what fuel costs that you have traveling back to and from. They usually try to make them to where there's no overnight stay required, and so you don't have the, you know, the cost of hotels and meals and everything. If you look at across the Commonwealth, there's 40, there's a shortage of 4,200 volunteers to help bolster the ranks, that is basically needed to bolster the ranks of the volunteer departments. You know, we feel like it would be a great opportunity for us to participate, because for us to maintain our combination department, which consists of career staff and volunteers, you've got to maintain that critical balance of your career staff and your volunteers. So we, we think it would be a very cost-effective way for us to get additional ideas and sort of help us look outside the box to see what we can do to better recruit and retain the volunteers within our departments, whether it be at Station One or Station Five out at, out at Hunterdale. By participating, you also receive opportunities to network with other departments that are, have experienced similar recruiting problems or retention problems, and share ideas of best practices in regards to recruiting and retaining the volunteers. We will also receive right at anywhere from about $7,500 to $10,000 in recruitment materials that we'll be able to use at career fairs, take to the, you know, different high schools, to the colleges, different places that we try to put information out to recruit the volunteers that we try to bring in throughout the year. The, there's some upfront work that we're required to do, and pretty much, we've completed everything that we're required to do, except for getting the MOU signed. The MOU has to be signed by all fire departments involved. Chief Lai has signed it. I've signed it for the downtown station, and also, our president has signed it for the downtown station. There are two signatures that we're here requesting tonight, is the signature of our city manager, and we would need your signature on the MOU also, Madam Mayor. There's nothing in the requirements that I don't feel like we can successfully meet. It is a two-year program, and they're hoping that it might be a phase three, depending on how the grant funds hold out. And if we were, participated the way we should, and the way I feel like we can, there's a possibility this could carry over into a, an extended period beyond the, beyond the two years, if we decide to, to participate further. Phase one departments, like I said, there's about 20 of those. They, they were also given an opportunity to participate in phase two. Some in phase one were not invited back to participate in phase two because they didn't meet their requirements that they were supposed to do. There's monthly reports that have to be sent in, and some of them didn't meet their reporting requirements. There's nothing that we see in the requirements that we don't feel comfortable that we could, that we can meet. And once again, it's a very low-cost program for us to participate in, and it's designed that way, because they know the amount of financial burden is placed on departments just to operate day-to-day businesses, much less to try to, you know, participate in something like this. But if you have any questions, I'd be glad to entertain them.
Questions for Chief Holt? And I'm to understand that you need authorize, we need authorization for Mr. Martin and the mayor to sign.
Yes, ma'am.
The memorandum of understanding. Is there a desired action by council?
So moved.
It's been moved and probably second by Mrs. Murphy to enter into a memorandum of understanding for the Virginia Volunteer Workforce Solutions. Are there any questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 An aye.
The MOU will be signed.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right.
There's an example, or copy of the MOU in your agenda package, but I'll leave the original with Mr. Martin, so you can get it signed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor and City Council, it's my pleasure to give you a couple of reports tonight. First, I would like to supplement the electric utility report that I went over at the March 25th meeting and shared with the city council. This is an update since that meeting. It's offered as a supplement to that report and the, since 2000, since March 25th, the city has intensified its outreach efforts to address concerns about utility rates expressed since late February 2013. Each member of the council, including the mayor, has made this a high priority and counseled with me individually about these citizen concerns on numerous occasions. The city billing staff have received over 40 inquiries from customers during this period. These inquiries range from questions about activities reported in the media that elevate bills to tips for energy conservation, to concerns that some landlords were not being responsive to tenant electrical issues. City staff have counseled with customers, they've made referrals to the Power and Light Department for energy audits. And in the case of those concerned about the condition of their property, referrals were made to the community development department to arrange for housing condition and code compliance inspections. The Power and Light Department has received five requests within the last week from customers for energy audits, with two scheduled but remaining to be completed probably this week. The department has received 10 additional meter reread requests since March 25th with no errors found. The community development department has received one inspection request with this tenant occupied property inspection scheduled to be coordinated with an energy audit later this week, is actually going to occur on Wednesday. And this was one of the citizens that I had met with last week that this was initiated from. I've received personally 19 inquiries and requests as of this writing and continue to evaluate and meet with these customers. Some of these customers have agreed at my suggestion to have energy audits and/or inspections and some are included in the contacts listed above made directly to the departments. The Power and Light staff and I have given three separate demonstrations of the city's meter reading equipment to members of this council, including the mayor, to local newspaper officials, and to the concerned citizen group. On Thursday, March 28th, the meter and reading equipment was demonstrated to concerned citizens at the Martin Luther King Jr. Center. To varying degrees during the meeting, approximately 40 concerned citizens attended and participated. After the demonstration, I spoke directly to the group, was invited by the chairperson of the group to comment and I reiterated the desire of the mayor, city council, and staff to address their concerns and encourage them to make an effort to contact the city for assistance with their concerns. The staff and I will continue to attempt to assist the remaining concerned customers. I am somewhat discouraged that some customers who express concerns to billing staff have not pursued other assistance. I hope they'll choose to do that. I'm also disappointed that some customers who made appointments to discuss their concerns failed to appear or canceled. Nevertheless, I am greatly encouraged by the interest many customers have expressed and the significant number of positive comments from customers praising the city's efforts and the quality level of service provided by the Power and Light Department. I and the staff remain committed to address all concerns. To this end, additional random meter checks are being considered by staff with elected officials represented as their time permits. Of all the meter reads and demonstrations performed thus far, staff has identified one meter that was not functioning properly. This finding has been shared with the media and the concerned citizen group. The malfunctioning meter has been replaced and then shipped as is without opening it or doing any tampering by the city staff for a third-party evaluation to determine the source of the malfunction. The results when received will be shared with all interested parties. The community development department has contacted the Southeastern Tidewater Opportunity Program, Inc., or STOP as it's locally referred to and regionally referred to. Representatives have been contacted, request their assistance in outreach to both homeowners and landlords to inform qualifying customers of funds available for weatherization and energy efficiency enhancements to residences needing these improvements. The city has requested that STOP staff physically come to Franklin and set up a designated time and place for interested citizens to obtain information on assistance programs and of course, receive help applying for those funds. We hope to finalize the details soon with public announcements of program details through the media and on the city's PEG channel. I am encouraged that the city and STOP will partner to bring the service conveniently to Franklin residents. I'll conclude this update with follow-up analysis of information submitted at the last meeting by representatives of the concerned citizens group during citizens' time. Specifically, a handout was presented to me that contained recent meter reading and billing information for 24 customer accounts. I'm still in the process of evaluating each of these customer accounts listed, some I had previously already reviewed with those customers. But I am prepared to comment on an attachment to the list of accounts submitted, which contained rate comparison information. The two rate comparison charts submitted reflected the following, and if I could get Melissa, she's going to show these on the PowerPoint. The first one submitted was Virginia Monthly Typical Residential Electric Bills and it referenced the source as rates effective July 1st, 2012, from the State Corporation Commission, which regulates non-municipal power electric utilities. And you see it displayed. This is the exact, no modification, what was presented. And it's listed in your packet as number one, slide number one. And you see that it lists, and this came, I presume, based on the comments of when it was provided from a Dominion, Dominion Virginia Power website. And you see in blue indicated the Dominion Virginia Power rate per thousand kilowatt hours of 107.22. You also see the Virginia average and you see various other public, public service companies and other providers across the state, ranging from the highest to the lowest. What occurred to me is this chart did not show Franklin based on the same parameters of 1,000 kilowatt hours, what the cost would be for that usage. So on slide number two, you'll see that the only modification that's been made is inserting Franklin and inserting the Community Electric Cooperative, which serves parts of Southampton County and surrounds parts of the Franklin system. The source for the additional data is the Office of the State Attorney General in a report they issued earlier this calendar year, effective January 2013. I think it's very telling that you'll note how Franklin compares with these other selected utilities. Some of this, particularly the Dominion and Franklin and Community Cooperative numbers were in the local media recently. But I think it shows very favorably how we compare across with the Virginia average, as well as across the entire spectrum of this chart. Next, we have a Dominion Virginia Power chart that also was under the impression that came from their website. And this is a competitive affordable rates chart. And you'll notice that in the caption, and this is exactly as it was presented by the citizens' group representative, residential rate comparison, typical monthly bills of 1,000 kilowatt hours. And this is based on January 2013 data and it shows their typical residential bill is 14% below the D.C. area average, 15% below the national average, and 21% below the East Coast average. This, of course, this chart did not show the Franklin situation, nor the Community Cooperative, Co-op Electric, Co-op. So on slide four, we have inserted the numbers, again, the source is the Office of the State Attorney General. These are not numbers generated by the city of Franklin. We have just simply taken the attorney general's data and inserted those two. And you see how we compare to the, to Virginia, Dominion Virginia Power, to our peers in the area, to D.C. area average and then the national average and the East Coast average. Again, I think Franklin on that chart clearly compares very favorably. I have attached these charts, this report, for reference as they were submitted by the concerned citizens representative without modifications. This was quite helpful information and I appreciate it to those folks that provided it. I've also included the same information as I just went over for Franklin and our local peers and compared those. And finally, you have one final, number five, chart that is busy with numbers, but you see the highlighted of the three local area utility services, Dominion, as well as Community Cooperative and City of Franklin. And this is a replica of the sheet that the attorney general's office provided us. And it shows how we compare with other municipal electric. The first column is all the municipals in Virginia, that's the cities that operate their own electric system. The second column is the investor-owned utilities like Dominion Virginia Power and ApCo and others that serve various parts of this state and other states. And in third column is the electric cooperatives that serve throughout the state of Virginia. And you see how we compare with others in the region as well as beyond. The results reflect how competitive the residential rates in the city are to our peers and the publicly regulated utilities in this state and beyond. Clearly, one statement made at the last meeting by one of the presenters was absolutely inaccurate, which characterized Franklin's rates as being the highest in the country. Franklin is not even the highest locally and compares very favorably to the peer groups in all the areas mentioned. I pledge to remain committed to the best of my ability to keep the council involved and to further informing citizens on how they can assist us and in so doing, help themselves as we utilize all available resources to spread the word on energy savings tips to city utility customers in the hope that customer usage and thereby electric utility bills will be reduced going forward. More citizens that have made contact will be receiving those contacts. I will continue to keep the city council informed at future meetings and of other activities as they occur. Be glad to answer any questions of city council on that topic. If not, I'm ready to move to the next.
Well, the first thing I'd like to do is commend Mr. Martin and staff for being willing to work with the citizens and encouraging them to come up and speak with you so that you can analyze their bill. To date, just to reemphasize what you just said, you've, staff has had individual reviews with the customers who contacted the city and wanted to, and made that request. You've analyzed their bills. You've offered energy audits and that's a standing offer. You have performed demonstrations for council as well as the citizens and the concerned group. We, and I don't remember you mentioning this, but I will just make this a little statement. We have met with the city manager, Mr. Philip Page, the Housing, Franklin Housing Authority Executive Director, and myself met to discuss what could be done to assist Section Eight participants that are getting ready to move into a new property. So we have started that conversation and come up with some things that will help those residents. And the, the collaboration with Franklin Redevelopment and Housing will continue through Mr. Martin, Mr. Bly, city staff, offering energy audits and things like that. We are going to continue to work with them. Does anyone else have any comments?
I have a, I just have a comment from Mr. Martin. Mr. Martin, I understand, I think I heard by the concerned citizen leader, that there was 1,000 people that were going to lose their lights. And I would like to know, has any of this 1,000 people, if it is, been to you to try to, you know, do what we asked to come to see you in regards to that? Because from what I'm hearing, you basically have so ahead about, I guess, 60, 60 to 70 people been to you? And this has been, you know, out there for the citizens to, you know, all points and actions that we are helping and we want to assist them. Now, we have 1,000 people out there. I would like to know, has anyone spoke with you?
Well, we certainly don't have that many facing getting their electric service discontinued by any stretch.
And I know that. And if they're housing, if they're in our housing, I'm sure that I think with the conversation with Mr. Page, if that was housing or whatever, that that's a great concern to me, to say 1,000 people and that, is that a question that we can find out from the housing?
We certainly.
We can find out because also the statement was made that it was public housing and, and then they would receive vouchers. And public housing does not receive vouchers. So we need some clarification from Mr. Page as far as public housing and the Section Eight participants and the vouchers.
He did not mention it during our meeting last week.
No, he did not.
So I'm not aware of this, but we certainly will talk to the housing authority and try to get some clarification.
And I'd like that to be made public as well when you do get the information.
I'd like to go through our processes on city council. We have basically three meetings, types of meetings. Work sessions where we have full discussions, fully vet topics. Usually they are 5:00, 5:30 prior to our regular meeting. Doesn't have to be, but usually is. After that, we would consider our regular meetings. Our regular meetings are started, starts second and fourth Mondays at 7:00. Both of those are public meetings. The public is invited to attend and listen to council discussion and debate. We fully vet. We also have closed meetings. And the closed meetings are surrounds, well, it does surround issues that no public announcement has been made. And they are closed to council and the city manager and the attorney, appropriate staff if we need. Just want to let you know exactly how council functions. When we come to this meeting, there has been discussion. Council has had the opportunity to ask major questions and we're ready to vote. So the, the open meeting, formal agenda is for voting. The discussion has taken place in work sessions usually. Anyone else have anything? All right.
I don't know what the problem is, but we seem to have a moving target. We heard tonight about electrical arcing, that was a new item that we hadn't heard before. We've heard of meter spinning, we've heard of billing rates different for different parts of the community. So I'm not sure if we have a payment problem or if we have an electrical grid problem. So I'm not an electrician, I can't address that. I'm relying on the electrical department to advise us to that and making sure that they do their part. I am concerned when citizens come forward and talk about an increase in usage, an unexplained increase in usage, not a billing problem. Would like to see if we can, is that really happening? I haven't heard any reports back that we've looked at people that have an increase in usage and it's unexplained. usage and it's unexplained and how we can explain other, you know, is it weather or is it something else that's happened? But regardless of all that, we do have a problem in the city with people not being able to pay their electric bills. And we heard that schools have a pretty high free or reduced lunch percentage. So we know that we have a segment of our population that is having a hard time paying their bills. So I would like to see us put together a committee or attach staff or whatever we need to do to go out and look for other resources. Not that the city, this council doesn't think, because we need the funds to operate our electric utility. But maybe there are other funds or other grant opportunities. Or for instance, I think on Dominion Resources, they have a thing called share.
Energy share.
Energy share, where you can add five dollars to your bill and they put that into a fund to help people who can. Maybe we make that available to the people of Franklin, to the ones of us who are fortunate enough to be able to pay our bills to help the people who aren't. There's a whole host of things that I can't, maybe we can make appeal to the community and we identify organizations. For instance, I heard somebody talk about the corporate ministry. Maybe if we make the appeal to the community, there'll be money that would be donated to the corporate ministry to help assist further with the electric bills to the people who would need it. I just, you know, I think we need to try to help. I know we do a lot and I heard a report about what corporate ministry does and I heard what, what social services does, but we still have that need. So I'd just like to see if we exhausted every effort on that end of the spectrum.
I'd like to comment on that. Also, we, I'd like to know all the resources that we already have, even though looking at that, we already have resources. I think we got just about all the churches that come together and assist. And then there are other, and then there's this people period that donate. So I would like to know what they are, how many they are versus social services that we already have. And as you said, and still, we can look, take a look at that. But we already have resources other than social services that are, that are assisted. So I'm not saying not to do that, but I, I think we, to be educated on what we've already have that's being given in the city would be also a good thing.
We don't know, I mean, we don't know what those are, so I think that's a good idea.
I think that's the source that we can find out.
That's right.
And I agree with what you all are saying. But this committee's leaders have said they would work with the city. I have yet, yet to see that happen. They went out and made a media circus out of it, the very next meeting. They have yet to work with the city on a one-on-one, but instead get everybody together to say, you're not doing anything, you're not doing enough for us. They have yet to work with, or work through the system that we set up, which was for each one to come up, cause electrical usage is an individual problem. And for them to come up so that the city can at least work through it. And they've yet to do it. And, and so I just, I just, I don't think the committee itself and the leadership of the committee is the ones that we need to be working with. I think we need to be working with the individuals of that committee, not with the leaders.
And I agree with you on that too, Barry.
And I'd like to say that, it's not a Sunday that I don't attend church, unless I'm sick or some major reason. I tide every month, twice a month. We have people coming to the church, getting funds to pay their living. I realize it's a problem, but it is an individual problem, not a committee's problem. And there's no committee in this city of Franklin or anywhere else can work this thing out. It's an individual problem.
Thank you. Last but not least, Reverend Johnson, we are waiting for three dates that Delegate Tyler will be available. And Mr. Martin, Delegate Tyler, myself, and if you and one other person from your committee would make yourselves available, we, Mr. Martin will get in contact with you on the available dates. If there is nothing else to be said about the electric rate, Mr. Martin, you wanna continue?
Can I say one other thing?
Oh, all right.
And in the end of this, I just would like to appeal to whoever's on TV or watching, I would like to appeal to the people, as they say, we have things in place, as Barry said, as Ms. Hillier said, it's an individual thing, come and see. Because we have fifty-five hundred people in the city and he's only dealt with seventy, then he can't do it if you're not here. And it's, like you said, it's not a group thing, individual thing, cause nobody else can handle anybody else's bill or know what's going on in the household. And then I think I've heard something about, I hear something about the nine meters that was looked at. I would like for, I think, I don't know if Dr. Johnson said it, but I think I heard it in the newspaper, may not be quoting exactly. I would like for, to, Mr. Bly, to be told about those meters so that we can take a look at that. Because if you're finding things and you're saying things out there, let's, let's find out what's going on with it.
May I?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to ask, sitting here, Senator Martin, if I have bills from other localities, let's just say under another electric power company, could you analyze that bill? And I don't care if it's printed in the paper, to further prove, to further enhance that we are not power takers, a power stealers, a trickery in this thing. I can't believe it. I've been in this city of Franklin paying bills for fifty years or more. And I just can't believe that it is, they're glitches. If you use it, you pay for it, or it's cut off.
I have submitted some bills to Mr. Martin as well that shows a friend paying more with Dominion, living in Cortland, paying more with Dominion than another one from the City of Franklin. And the houses are about the same size, but that just depends on the efficiency of the home and the practices of the residents as well. But we will continue this and we will continue to address concerns, ask Mr. Bly to beef himself up on the arcing, the electrical arcing, so that we can have that discussion as well. Mr. Martin, would you like to continue? I'm sorry.
Yes. Ready to move on. I would like to say one thing in closing on that that I haven't mentioned, just for purposes of the public. You heard comments tonight, you've heard them at two or three meetings about people throwing out numbers about bills. The city is very limited to what we can disclose or discuss about individual accounts and customers. It may appear uncaring that we don't comment. I am privy of, tonight, of some of the examples, a couple that were up there that I've met with the people. And, and, you know, I wanna be polite and listen, but I have seen the facts and I know the facts, and the facts are not agreeing with some of the comments that are being made. But those may be the exceptions. People should not hesitate to come in, as Councilwoman Murphy just pointed out, to get their situation analyzed. They're not gonna be penalized, they're not gonna be hurt by it, we're not gonna take any kind of retaliatory action. We're gonna just try our best to understand and help them, and help them understand their situation and do what we can to help them. But we are at a disadvantage. The only things we can disclose are those authorized legally by the state about individual customers. The customer themselves can disclose whatever they choose to, it's their records. But we cannot talk about who pays what and where they get the money from to pay it. But it, it is a significant disadvantage the city's at with regard to that. And I just felt like some people have been wondering why incorrect information hasn't been refuted necessarily about individual customers or validated, but we don't have the ability to do that with, with several limitations. But when we can, we will share that in terms of the amount, the usage, the name and address. That's pretty much all that we are able to disclose based on our legal advice we've gotten under the state's regulations. So I didn't wanna clarify that. Next item would be city health insurance rate report for thirteen fourteen. We're required to present this to the city council and give you some insights. It's been a practice in Franklin for many years. Decision has to be made. We got a thirty-day extension, it has to be made by the end of April, on continuing participation in our current health benefit provider, carrier. With that regard, I hope Carolyn is still here. Yeah, she's still here, so she made it through. I've provided the council with a message on this, a letter that was provided to me by Ms. Carolyn that goes through the requirements and the deadlines. What, what I guess is significant in this that we need to share, and we'll try to answer any questions, is this year, we are, we've looked very carefully at the rules and regulations and how the carrier, the insurance carrier requires that we divide the bill, the minimum requirement for dividing the bill, when, cause Franklin, for those that aren't privy to the information in the audience, Franklin has chosen some years ago to have a cost-sharing of the expenses for the employee health insurance plans. The city currently offers two plans. They're not the best plans, but they're not the worst plans either in terms of benefit and, and cost. But the city has been doing that for some years. We are privy to information recently that's not in your packet, that the state through the legislature has, has put forward a study and analysis has been authorized, and we're gonna participate, giving them our data, where there's consideration for adding local government employees and school systems, possibly to, and cities and counties, to the state health plan. That probably won't be an option until at least the next general assembly, but that report and study will be completed and go back to them. We're certainly gonna participate in that. Everybody knows and has been working on what it costs to pay for healthcare. And the situation's not gonna get a whole lot better from all the prognosis. But we have been trying to manage our costs and manage the care here. There are two plans offered. The employee has some stake or skin in the game, is what I call it, in that they participate at a certain level. Typically, it's about eighty percent, twenty percent for the employee coverage. That's what the city council set up, with the city paying the bulk of it. Some communities for years, and I assume Franklin did at one time, would pay a hundred percent of healthcare cost for the employee. But Franklin moved in the opposite direction, as many units have, of cost-sharing that. The, the higher the benefit of the two plans, the more the employee pays and the more the city would pay the same under either plan, based on what we're now interpreting the guidelines. But the employee can choose to have a higher benefit and pay the, the extra cost. Whatever we do, if we continue to offer two plans, which is our recommendation for this year, then our cost, based on our experience, has increased a little over nine percent. And you saw the numbers that that pans out to. What we did find out this year, that apparently hasn't been the case in past years, there is a formula by which we merge the two planned costs and come up with an average for the employee share and the city share. And we did that this year in compliance with the guidelines. And this would truly reflect the city's intent to pay its share of the employee coverage. This year, that will mean a higher increase for the employees than on the city's side. But I feel as manager that we wanna do it compliant with the policy. I'll be discussing this in more detail with the staff and staff meeting tomorrow and will be communicating with employees going forward, depending on what guidance we get tonight from the city council. But the bottom line is, I feel it's imperative that the city hold the line on insurance costs for the city's share. This is a big-ticket item, it's a lot of money, but it is a trend that's going in that direction nationwide, and I feel like we're obligated to do the responsible thing for the taxpayers. I am hopeful, can't predict yet because the budget's not finalized, the proposed budget for this coming year, but I am hopeful that the employees will see some compensation increase recommended. Of course, it'll be the council's decision whether any gets funded, but I hope there's something recommended that would offset the increased cost in insurance for at least employee coverage. Now, the same holds true on the family and, and other options, spouse plus one type options that are available to the employees. Those costs are going up as well under this plan. At this juncture, we don't have any option to switch coverage and retain coverage because of the timing. You have to notify them, cause it goes into effect July one, and we have to know by the end of April. But it's my recommendation, my intent, and you'll, we'll discuss this more in the budget, to recommend that we seek additional proposals next year for comparison's sake. We pursue this opportunity or a potential option of working with the state to become part of the state plan, just again, trying to be as cost-effective as we can. Now, on behalf of employees, I, I wanna say that I know that a lot of the line employees and others will be concerned about any increase at all, but I'm really pleased with the efforts that, something I've shared with this council during the goal sessions, that we're gonna pursue, to do two things. One, we're gonna pursue, which will hopefully reap benefits next year, in our premium, reduce premium cost by doing a re-energized, reactivated safety committee. I'm pleased to report that under Chief Holt's leadership as chair, each of the departments have been meeting regularly and they're making progress towards that. And I have every belief we will meet our goals to get a premium reduction in the next fiscal year, approved in the next fiscal year by our carrier, whoever it is, whether we stay with the current plan or another, for future years, as a result of the efforts of that safety committee. And we'll also see safer activities by our employees and improved situation all the way around. Secondly, under the guidance of that same committee and the leadership of Brenda Rickman, who volunteered somewhat to head up wellness aspect of that group, they're discussing that. We already have a Weight Watchers group that's formed and is, is going well. And we hope to do many other wellness activities that are gonna improve the health and wellness of our employees. Because the reason our insurance premium will go up nine point one percent next year is our experience, which in insurance language, as many of you may know, is how much we had in terms of claims this year, this past year. So we're, we're gonna do whatever we can to help ourselves by lowering our insurance claims and through wellness and safety and all the other benefits that come along with it. So tonight, it's before you to authorize us to continue the plan. We do have to do this before the end of the month. If you have questions, invite Ms. Joyner up to help me answer them. Otherwise, we would need that approval authorization to submit our intent to continue the same plan this year, or, or do it at the next meeting would be the latest we could possibly do it.
Are there any questions? Just a note, so you, look on your memorandum from Carolyn Joyner to Mr. Martin at the bottom, it says, it is recommended that council approve the increased rate adjustment for the key advantage expanded and the key advantage five hundred plans and allow for the continued coverage for health services for the employees of the City of Franklin fiscal year two thousand thirteen fourteen. Do you have any questions for either Mr. Martin or Ms. Joyner?
Now, I'm gonna tell you, nine percent's a very low increase. Mine this year went up twenty percent and expect to go up again another twenty next year. And it's all connected with the Affordable Healthcare Act. So nine percent is a very, very reasonable increase compared to most people that I know, most companies that I've seen. That's cause you're an old man.
And just as a reminder, we had a reduction last year of five percent, so basically they're taking back what the reduction was last year, plus four. So I agree with your comments, we actually don't have that significant increase.
We were scheduled for a decrease this year, but instead it went
We were scheduled for a decrease this year, but instead it went up 20%.
So, what are the deadlines now?
We have to notify them before the end of the month. So, I'd recommend it to give us plenty of time if you go ahead tonight.
Is there a desired action by council tonight or next meeting? Some move to, second to, some move to...
To approve the increased rate adjustment.
Oh, right. Is that fine, Ms. Murphy?
And authorize.
Okay. And the second was Vice Mayor Cheetum, correct? Okay. It's been moved and properly second to adopt the city's health insurance rate report along with the increases in the rates and continue this current structure for the city employees. Are there any questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Nay's have the same opportunity.
Aye.
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 And aye. So, we got that out of the, off of the agenda for next meeting, Mr. Martin. We did it tonight.
Thank you. Mayor and council, the only other item that, I don't have a report prepared tonight, but it's been in the media, but I did send a number of correspondents to the council, keeping you abreast of the action of the general assembly this past week regarding the impact on the city of Franklin. That continues to evolve and I anticipate at the Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organization on April 17, there will be action considered by that organization, at which time I'll bring some type of memorandum of agreement back to the city council for consideration regarding the city's participation, to what degree, we don't know yet, in the TPO. And as members of the planning district and as members of the now area that's going to be impacted by the increased sales tax and the impact on the gasoline tax changes, we will be eligible for participation in that apparently. And I'll keep you abreast, but unless you've got questions or comments, I think it was mentioned in the media, but I didn't want to not disclose that that will be the upcoming actions of the council in the next few weeks.
All right. We thank you. Council and staff reports on boards and commissions?
The Franklin's president met a week ago. They all run together at this point.
Last Tuesday.
At this point in the game. But we had a really good discussion. We're beginning to see some of the places where we have gaps and we're trying to fill those. And we're trying to also at the same time get a, get more of a direction of where we want to go and that kind of thing. So, hopefully at our next meeting, we'll try to tie that down and get a more, we want to expand outside the schools into the community and that's what we're trying to get to. It's under your direction, what you advise us to do, and that's what we're trying to get. And we just need to get our focus and that's what we're, right now, we've been working with the schools and the different agencies. Now, we need to get a fair, have a great community.
All right. Anyone else? Mr. Vice Mayor?
Several of us went to the annual chamber meeting. It was a very nice function and I congratulate Michael Clark on a great year that he's had and wish Bobby Cutchins the best in his leadership role this coming year. And overall, it was a nice affair and I think there were four of us there.
It was. It was a well-planned affair as usual, but the enthusiasm and the motivation, the activity of the chamber has really increased and we appreciate that for the business community. I'd like to talk about PTO for just a moment. In the past, we've had a health insurance review committee comprised of staff at all levels, from department heads to line employees. And I'd like to, and I've spoken with the manager about this, like for that committee or a committee that the manager would designate to deal with personal time off as well as the health insurance. But the personal time off, the PTO, has been of question for a while. And I said earlier that members of council, I believe Mrs. Hilliard and myself are the only ones that were privy to that being put in place. So, now, we have new members of council and some not so new members of council. And we want to open that discussion up again. So, the manager has been tasked with that and looking for some type of report or recommendation coming from that committee by May or June timeframe.
Is there, you have some previous information regarding that?
Well, the committee is going to get together and review what we currently have in place and review other plans, like the state plan, other corporations, and come back to us with a recommendation. But if the manager would email the current information out to council members so that they can familiarize themselves with it, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I think that was done three years ago.
It's longer than that.
Yeah, when we first came on.
We addressed it. We updated.
Russ's assistant was the chairman of it.
Well, the PTO has been in place for quite a while now though. But we may have amended the policy, but this way the PTO is structured has been in place for some time. And citizens, not citizens, I'm sorry, employees have spoken up and said that they would like it reviewed. So, this is a way to have them have some input in our structured PTO.
Okay, you said that they...
Or vacation leave and sick leave. We don't have that any longer. It's all personal time off. Yes. So, but he will get you that information so that you can familiarize yourself with it. We have closed session on the agenda.
I moved that the Franklin City Council meeting closed session to consider appointments to boards and commissions and to discuss a prospective business or industry locating in the area where no previous announcement has been made pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711, A1 and 5.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly second to go into closed session. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Nay's have the same opportunity.
Aye.
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 And aye. We're now going into closed session and we thank you.
Madam Mayor, announcements, everybody. There is cake on the back table that everybody is welcome to have.